Thomas, this is the December 10th meeting of the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners. Let us begin, Lou, with a roll call and the announcement of the open public meetings law.
County Commissioners Cruz,
Here.
Duffy,
Here.
Gallo,
Here.
James, Lepore,
Here.
Deputy Director Lozera,
Here.
Director Bartlett,
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice, adopted a reorganization meeting, filed with the county clerk, and posted in the administration building, and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Thank you very much. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation and a moment of silence.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Father Ryan, would you kick off our Christmas meeting with an appropriate invocation?
I apologize to all of you. I was in Commissioner Duffy's office, and he started to go to confession. We get up to 1968, and I could see my hair going gray.
Father, we have children in the United States. We should be the one apologizing to you.
Thank God I can't repeat anything.
Just read the prayer.
All right, all right. You see the abuse a priest takes with him? In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. God our Father, as we approach this holy season of Christmas, let us remember that we have been created in your image and likeness, and that all of us are your sons and daughters. May all of us work for peace every day by the actions we share with each other. May we, like Mary, become Christ-bearers to the world, bring healing to our country and peace to Lebanon and Syria. May the killing of innocent children and women in the Middle East end, and through our efforts as a nation end starvation throughout the African continent. Let peace reign in our hearts, and may that peace help us to renew the face of the earth. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces, and all who have died from the COVID-19 pandemic, especially the 2,314 residents of Passaic County. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes of November 18, 2024?
Second. County Commissioners Cruz,
Yes.
Duffy,
Yes.
Gallo,
Yes.
Lepore,
Yeah.
Deputy Director Lozera,
Yes.
Director Bartlett,
Yes. May I have a motion for approval of the proclamation?
Second. Moved by Cruz, seconded by Gallo. County Commissioners Cruz, Duffy,
Yes.
Gallo,
Yes.
Lepore,
Yeah.
Deputy Director Lozera,
Yes.
Director Bartlett,
Yes. That brings it to the Administrator's report. Matthew?
Oh, thank you, Director. First, we have the Techtones here with us from our technical high school, led by co-advisor Dr. DeVor, co-director Mr. Bartinez, and organist Mr. Donald Parker. So, Techtones, please take it away.
You want a hot toddy? I don't even know what a hot toddy is.
No, I don't either.
Here we are, as in golden days, happy golden days of yore. Daintful friends who are dear to us, gathered near to us once more. In thy dreams we all will be together with the flame alive. Make us shiny, sorrow upon the highest star. Serve yourself a merry little Christmas. Here we are, as in golden days, happy golden days of yore. Daintful friends who are dear to us, gathered near to us once more. Once more. In thy dreams we all will be together with the flame alive. Make us shiny, sorrow upon the highest star. Serve yourself a merry little Christmas. Have yourself a merry little Christmas. Have yourself a merry little Christmas.
Now, wait one second. Oop, Dr. DeVor, I don't want to... Is this on? The mic's on? No? Are they working? Thank you. Oop, is it working yet? Not yet. Bueller? Is it on now? Thank you so much. That was wonderful. Can we have another round of applause for the Techtones? Director, next on my agenda is a presentation of a proclamation recognizing Dr. Gungill's retirement as our health officer. A lot of things are going to be said about her professional achievements. Personally, I've felt privileged to work with you. You're a true public servant. I'm going to miss you. You know, you go through an experience like COVID-19, and you develop a bond with a person. And I've developed that with you, and I love you, and I'm going to miss you, and I wish you the best in your retirement. You've been through so much, and handled it all with such grace, and still been just such an exemplary public servant. You're going to be missed. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you for the proclamation.
All right. It's a very good introduction, Matt, and this is an extraordinary presentation, so we're going to have a little bit of an extraordinary way of going about it. I want to ask all my colleagues to join me down at the podium along with Dr. Gungill for this presentation. All right. Gather round. I just showered the other day. I'm going to take my director's privilege to actually be the one to read the proclamation, but the fact that you're surrounded by all of us, I think, is a symbol of how consequential you've been here in Passaic County. So, whereas the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic has the desire to recognize Dr. Charlene Williams Gungill as she retires from the Passaic County Health Department, and whereas Dr. Gungill is the respective health officer for the boroughs of Woodland Park, Halden, Wannacue, and the township of West Milford, as well as the Director of the Health Department, which is comprised of four divisions: Emergency Preparedness and Bioterrorism, Environmental, Mosquito Control, and Natural Resource and Recycling; and whereas Dr. Gungill is a graduate of Nova Southeastern University, the UMDNJ School of Public Health, Montclair State University, and William Patterson University; and whereas Dr. Gungill is a New Jersey Department of Health licensed health officer and registered environmental health specialist, she is also an instructor of public health at William Patterson University, Chair of the Health Coalition of Passaic County, President of the Passaic County Public Health Partnership, Trustee of the Partnership for Maternal and Child Health of Northern New Jersey, Passaic County Food Policy Council, North Jersey Health Collaborative, Northeast Regional Health Coalition Urban Area Security Initiative, and several other health and community-related organizations. And whereas Dr. Gungill has proven her dedication and concern for the County of Passaic through her everlasting commitment and noble acts of service and heroism, specifically during the COVID-19 pandemic, her efforts have allowed the public health threat to decrease throughout Passaic County by setting up and operating the county's and, in fact, New Jersey's first COVID-19 drive-through testing site at William Patterson University, before transitioning to walk-through testing, pop-up sites throughout the county, and setting up the county's first at-home testing services. And whereas Dr. Charlene Gungill has been part of the discussions for the development of a new satellite office in West Milford, New Jersey, which will offer an array of services to our residents up county that include health services, human services, and senior services; and whereas Dr. Gungill is a lifelong Methodist, growing up in the St. George's Methodist Church on the island of Grenada, she has helped meditate leadership and stewardship positions, some of these including President of the Youth Group, Secretary of the Women's League, Island Representative to the District Youth Leadership Training Program, and the Caribbean Women of the Methodist Church in the Caribbean and the Americas. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Dr. Charlene Williams Gungill for the significant contributions and lives she has saved in the County of Passaic and all of its communities. And be it further proclaimed that this board wishes Dr. Gungill health and happiness in her retirement. If any of my colleagues would like to add anything, feel free.
So, Charlene, I have to say, you're going to have big shoes to fill. You have done so much for this county. You've done so much for all of us. I know personally, during COVID, you were a rock for myself, for my family, for my colleagues, and everyone here. I just wish you the very best retirement that anyone could have, and just know how much that we appreciate you, and as Matt said, we do love you. It's a family here, and you're a huge part of that family. I wish you all the best.
Dr. Gungill, I've been here 20 years, and a lot has gone on during that 20-year period. I've experienced a lot of ups and downs. I've met a lot of wonderful people. I've seen what the community can do when it comes together. But there's one thing that I'm going to take away from my time here as Freeholder Commissioner, and that's the time I spent with you, and watched you do your work, watched you do your magic, watched you take care of so many people, watched you save so many lives. That's what I'm going to take away from, and I'm so blessed and so honored to have served with you. Thank you.
Seeing no one at the podium?
Sure, my turn. I try to watch my language. As Pat said, and he kind of stole the show there, we've been here a long time, 20 years, where we've seen health officers come and go, but you really have brought us to the highest level through your poise, your just... You know, just the way you run the whole show and how you are, never get upset, everything's on an evil keel, and we thank you from the county, and I personally thank you because you're just a wonderful person. And you did send your kid to Donbassco, so it wasn't all that bad. And we will miss you.
I won't be left out, don't worry. I haven't had the privilege of working alongside you as long as everyone else, because I'm the baby in the group, in case anybody didn't know. But I also had the privilege and have the privilege of working alongside you at the Health Coalition Board as well. So just seeing your leadership and knowledge and your commitment to our community firsthand has been an honor and a privilege. So you will be missed, but not forgotten. Thank you.
I've only been here for three years, and it was a pleasure to meet you, and I just want to wish you the best of luck in the future.
First of all, thank you to each of you, each Commissioner, present and past, because there was some past, and especially thank you for hiring me. You know, you had options, and you chose this option, and this option was an immigrant from Grenada, West Indies. And I just want to say that because you chose this option, you gave me the opportunity to help and to save lives, I believe, and to make a difference, and so I am grateful for that to each and every one of you. I'm also grateful for the previous administrator and the current administrator for allowing me to do my job. You know, throughout the country, actually throughout the world, during COVID, many of my colleagues were not able to do their jobs. We trained to do this work, and this was so politicized that many people were not able to do their jobs, but you guys allowed me to do what I- But you guys allowed me to do what I was trained to do. And that's why we got the results that we got, because you recognized that this was about the people and the service, and that's the only reason why I'm standing here, because I believe in helping others. That's why I'm here, and that's what I intended to do, and you allowed me to do it. So thank you so very much for that. I'd also like to thank my colleagues, the other department heads, particularly the ones who the previous administrator, Mr. De Nova, put together to respond to COVID. So I'm talking about Kelly. I'm talking about Steve. I'm talking about Sherry. I'm talking about those who have gone before, like the sheriff, et cetera. Mr. De Nova put together a team, and that team were the people who really worked hard, where's Lou? Lou, really worked hard to make this happen. And, you know, you really see who people are in the way they respond in crisis situations. And Passaic County responded admirably during a crisis, and I'm so proud to be part of this team all these years. I would be remiss if I do not mention my team in the Health Department. My team stepped up and out. They worked day and night. We had very long days, and, you know, we didn't know what the next day was going to be, but we all knew we had something to do. We knew it was important. We didn't know, I mean, when this all started, there was no money involved. But you, Commissioners, allowed the administrator to provide services, not knowing where the next dollar was going to come from. You said, "We want to serve the residents of Passaic County. It will be free, and we don't care about insurance and all of that. We just want to serve." And that's what I needed. I need to know that you had the heart to do it. And so you gave me that, and I was able to do what I did for the residents of Passaic County. But I couldn't do it without my team. And with me today is Ariselli. She's new on the team, but she has the same heart and dedication. Nan was here throughout, at the beginning and throughout, and she continues to give of herself. She's the longest-serving person in my department, to 35 years, I believe, of service. And we have new people on board. They have the same idea. That's, that's the ideology I look for. We are public servants. We are here to give of ourselves. I tell them all the time, "You're never going to be a millionaire doing this job, but what you're going to get is what's in your soul. You're going to get that satisfaction that you're helping somebody else." Last but not least is my family. Obviously, you have to come from somewhere to do what you do, and I so appreciate my siblings, the ones that are here, the ones that are not here. I lost a sister a few years ago, and so I miss her terribly, and my mom as well. But thank you to all of you for being there for me, being here today, being here in the past, and my husband, who allowed me to just take it and run with it. Never complained, just always, as long as I was doing what I was happy doing, he was happy being in the background. And so thank you, all of you. Appreciate all of you.
Just one more thing, Director. Our Superintendent of Building and Grounds, Steve Ruscini, welcomed a granddaughter to the world today, so congratulations, Steve. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Matt. That brings us to County Commissioner Reports. Steve, congratulations, and also thank you for the exceptional work you did beautifying our building here for the holiday season. It was really fun this afternoon, lighting the tree with all the kids from the daycare next door. I don't have much today, but I do want to mention to everybody, as we head into the Christmas season, there's so much to do across Passaic County. Starting this weekend, Thursday evening, the 12th, we have a wine and cheese at the Di Mansion. It's going to be our first unveiling of the Di Mansion decorated as a colonial Christmas, and we want everyone to come out for the wine and cheese, which supports Friends of Passaic County Parks, and come out throughout the weekend upcoming, which is going to have historical reenactments with the Christmas spirit in mind at the Di Mansion in Wayne. So we hope you all would join us for that. And since this is our last meeting before Christmas, before Hanukkah begins, I want to wish happy holidays to everyone, whatever you celebrate. May it be a season of joy and family and friendship and peace for you and your families. So Sandy?
Just with the holidays upon us, I want to wish everybody a joyful celebration with your families, whether it's Hanukkah or Christmas. But please be safe, and just wrap your arms around those you love, because these times don't come around that often. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge our Youth Services Commission under the leadership of our Director, LaVar Starr. We had our annual Youth Service Conference. It was the 10th anniversary. Commissioner Lazara was up there with me as well. She saw firsthand the entire event put together. We had over 200 attendees, over 33 vendors. We had young people from three different institutions that participated. And so it was our largest youth service conference to date. And so I just want to thank the staff up at Youth Services for all their hard work in putting this together. It was beyond a successful event, and we're looking forward to the continued success of that conference. And also happy holidays to all those in Passaic County that celebrate the festivities, and God bless our county.
I have 11 items on the agenda you're all familiar with. Merry Christmas to everyone, of course. Once again, congratulations. You're going to be so late. Miss doctor. It's been a great year. Hopefully we'll look forward to a better year, healthy year for everyone, and God bless each and everyone and your families. Stay safe. Thank you.
Mr. Gallo?
I just want to wish everyone a healthy, a happy, and a safe holiday season. Thank you.
Turn on your mic, please. Nothing for Christmas. You know that.
Thank you very much, Pat. Actually, there's one more thing before we move on from reports, and Sandy, you might know more than I. I know we have an outreach coming up later this week for unhoused veterans.
So on Thursday and Friday of this week, the county is working in unison with Catholic charities and New Jersey SOS veterans to go out and, almost like a point-in-time count, where we're going to be looking for homeless veterans who are in need of some guidance. We're starting off, and just this week, on Thursday and Friday, it'll be Patterson, Passaic, and Clifton. And the goal is to locate those homeless veterans, see if we can help them, we can put them into a hotel for three or four nights. There's going to be a cold blue this week coming up, so it's an important time to do this. And then SOS vets and Catholic charities and our own organizations will be trying to work with the veterans to help them find housing or to locate any family members they might have, to help them find food, and just hook them up with the services that could help them lead lives that are, where they can be warm, and they can have a meal, and they can have family around them. So this is, it's called Helping Hands. This is Thursday and Friday, Thursday in Patterson, Friday in Passaic and Clifton. After the New Year's, we're going to be spreading out and going into the other towns throughout Passaic County to hopefully find the vets and help, and give them what they so richly deserve, which is a foot to stand on and somebody to help them. So that's, that's our initiative, and hopefully it'll be successful.
Thank you, Sandy. Appreciate that. That brings us, for those of you who are following along, to Letter K, the oral portion. Can I have a motion to open the public portion of the meeting?
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz, Duffy, Gallo, Lepore, Deputy Director Lazara, Director Bartlet?
Yes. This is the public portion of the meeting, where anyone who wants to can approach the podium. You got three minutes. We ask you to begin with your name and address, and to take note that whatever you say will be part of the public meeting record, and in fact, will be broadcast as you speak.
Barry Houston, 235 Washington Ave., Hawthorne, New Jersey, and a proud resident of Passaic County. I dropped off a, oops, this is terrible. I dropped off a letter a couple weeks ago asking for a small piece of property at the southern end of Coffel Brook Park. We currently have a, I run the roller hockey program in Hawthorne. We are the only town in Passaic County against all these Bergen County towns. Our rink has been located at the Hawthorne High School for the last 26 years, and for whatever reason, the last two years, the Board of Education and the Borough and the Council have disagreed on keeping the rink there. And it's been frustrating, to say the least. And I don't know, did you guys get this letter?
Yes, I know I received my copy, yeah.
Like I said, it's just, maybe I'm desperate, but, you know, the town doesn't seem to have any real open space, and I was just wondering if, this is near, this is right next to the Boys, Boys Club in Hawthorne. I just wonder if it's any, if it's feasible to buy a piece of property for a dollar from the, from the county. If that's something that could be in the works or possibility or, because right now it's, it's not looking too good as far as, we had an agreement, was signed back in 1996, but they, the Board of Ed said that that agreement's no longer valid, and the Borough and them have been going back and forth, but with no resolve. We're currently playing. They gave me my permit and everything else, but, you know, they're constantly locking the rink up and other threats and whatever. I don't know if you guys can help me out or not, or...
Thank you. Yeah, no, this isn't, this isn't where we like have that whole conversation, but we appreciate the info. I can tell you that I got, at least in my office, on my desk, my copy of your letter. And obviously, we need to speak to staff, but we'll follow up with you at a later date.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thanks for taking the time to come out.
Seeing no one at the podium, move the clothes to public portion.
Second. County Commissioners Cruz, Duffy, Gallo, Lepore, Deputy Director Lazara, Director Bartlet?
Yes. Letter L, a two-thirds vote resolution. Do we need to read that title into the record, Lou, or just call a vote?
No, I think we're okay.
Okay. Can I have a motion and second on L1?
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz, Duffy, Gallo, Lepore, Deputy Director Lazara, Director Bartlet?
Yes. That brings us to our consent agenda, Letter M. Counsel, we have two late starters?
Yes, Director Thuyu, we have two late starters tonight. The first one is N86. It's a resolution accepting grant award from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Passaic County Community Development Block Grant Program for fiscal year 2024 pursuant to NJSA 40:20-1. The second resolution is N87. It's a resolution qualifying bidders for the Passaic County Core House Exterior Restoration Project pursuant to RFQ 24-084 pursuant to NJSA 40:11-5. At sec, I would just ask that these two resolutions be added to the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any items on the consent agenda that any Commissioner wants pulled out and voted separately? Seeing none? I will take a motion and a second to adopt Consent Agenda M1. We have to add first? Okay. I'll take a motion and a second to add M86 and M87 as late starters described by counsel.
Okay, moved by Lepore, seconded by Duffy. County Commissioners Cruz, Duffy, Gallo, Lepore, Deputy Director Lazara, Director Bartlet?
Yes. I'll take a motion on M1 through M87.
Cruz? M11, 13, and 39. County Commissioners Duffy, Gallo, Lepore, Deputy Director Lazara, Director Bartlet?
Yes. All right. That brings us to new business. Can I have a motion on the personnel?
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz, Duffy, Gallo, Lepore, Deputy Director Lazara, Director Bartlet?
Yes, bills.
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz, Duffy, Gallo, Lepore, Deputy Director Lazara, Director Bartlet?
Yes. Anything else before we wrap up? And I think we should just congratulate Ariselli Pintell, who was just approved as our health officer after Dr. Gungill retired. So congratulations. All right. Congratulations. Again, Merry Christmas to everyone, and with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Take that motion.
Duffy?
Lepore.
County Commissioners Cruz, Duffy, Gallo, Lepore, Deputy Director Lazara, Director Bartlet?
Yes. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas and happy Hanukkah.